Good evening, welcome to the April 25th, 2017 meeting in the Miller School Committee. I'll start by announcing the meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. Start with roll call vote to my left. Denise?
Here.
Sean?
Here.
Superintendent?
Here.
Steve?
Present.
Chad?
Here.
Will our teacher represent?
Here.
No student reps tonight? Jody, anybody sign in for open session?
There is none.
All right. And first item is approve the April 11th School Committee meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I make a motion that we approve the April 11th, 2017 meeting minutes. Two minute meeting minutes.
Second.
Approve and second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we will do consideration to approve the high school handbook. The elementary and middle school handbook we're going to do at the next meeting due to some unexpected scheduling issues. So we have the high school handbook.
This will be kind of brief because every year the school council reviews the handbook, solicits input from various stakeholders including students, parents, staff, and it's a yearly function we do as a school council. And we did such a good job last year that it looks like this year we didn't have much to add. So the one addition, the one proposed addition is to update the suspected head injury concussion policy, a new policy which you guys approved back in March. And so what I'd like to do is put in an introduction and then reference the website URL that has the actual school committee policy and the Mass General Law because I was here when you guys did a spirited reading of it. And it's like seven pages long and they charge us by the page for the handbook. So my proposal would be to put in kind of an introduction that discusses the policy, the main areas of the policy, and then reference the website URL that has the complete policy for people that want to delve a little deeper into it.
And if I may add, Mr. Chair, that for anybody to participate in extracurricular athletics or merching, then they have to sign off on that. So they will, parents will have a full copy of it at some point, just it's not necessary to go in the handbook.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the recommended change to the high school handbook for, that outlines the policy change in the concussion and head injury protocols.
Second.
And move and second it. Further discussion?
I think the policies, I think directing them to the website is probably, so if we change that policy, you don't necessarily have to change the book the next year, right? We could change it year to year.
Right, exactly.
As long as the introduction stays.
Right, yeah, well, we tweak it as necessary, but hopefully they've got that concussion law down so that it's not a constant change, right?
Makes sense.
I mean, I, the thing is, if there's more in that handbook that you can do this with?
Yeah, that might be a task for us next, yeah, we'll redo it next year and say, what can we do?
Do that if it, you know.
And, you know, I don't know if at some point the old handbook goes online, and I don't know the, you know, by law we have to have a student-parent handbook. I don't know the parameters of, doesn't have to be in hot, provided in hot copy to everyone. That I don't know. I do know that, you know, what we do with the handbooks, it also has an agenda book, which a number of the kids in the school, it's like the Bible, they, you know, hang on to it and if they lose it, they freak out. So, I mean, having some kind of agenda for the kids is a good thing.
Not yet, but, I mean, you keep the agenda stuff, but have the policies same space and...
Yeah, I think that's something we can definitely look into.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Aye.
And I have some, I just got some news today that's good for our school. Millis earned a silver medal in U of U World Report's Best High Schools in America, so we're very pleased.
Right.
31st in the state, I think 664th in the country, I think, so.
Aye.
I'm proud of that. And that's based on what the kids are doing in class, how they're performing, so, but I want to be late, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And Josh is here, so, go ahead.
Not much this week, and that's largely because last week was April vacation. During that time, a number of Spanish students went to Peru, at least the number was 28, and a lot of people got sick, but everyone made it back, so it's good. Through May 1st to May 12th are the AP tests, and the test are every day, but are every school day, but not all students, or not all the classes, the AP tests are on, are taken here. Then seniors also get out soon, and prom is May 5th at Lake Pearl.
Teacher represent, in front of that.
All schools have May 5th, Fall is a half-day, not all Fall, but they have a half-day on May 5th, so it is prom. Clyde Brown is celebrating a birthday this week, and tomorrow students should go around for the soil, Thursday's rainbow colors for flowers, and Friday is clothing with an animal on it. They have, 4th grade field day is June 13th, and then 1st and 3rd grade are the 14th, and 2nd grade's field day is on the 15th. Middle school has MCAS tomorrow and Thursday, and next Wednesday and Thursday. They have a spring concert, May 31st at 7:00 PM. And the high school has a chem club trip, field trip to the Museum of Science on Thursday this week. Literary Arts Night is May 4th, so that's a week from Thursday. It's here at the library. There'll be music art performances, and it'll be both students and guests from outside. There is also that evening a Trip 63 Dance Recital, and then there'll be a high school art show, May 9th. And May 11th is the Trip to Maine, the field trip with outdoor pursuits.
Well, the football team will be, I think I announced it prior to vacation, but tomorrow is when they get their award, or they're getting, they're being honored at the State House.
So Josh mentioned the trip to Peru, which I was fortunate enough to be a participant in, and it was phenomenal. It was, I think, life-changing and certainly worldview-altering for a number of our students, 28 of our students. And the kids were phenomenal, and the teachers worked extremely hard. It was amazing to me how dedicated and caring and loving and tough love that our teachers are to make this all happen. And Mr. Malini hosted a chatroom with a group of eight students to Kapstrakum, which is in the Netherlands over vacation for the other part of our exchange with what is now becoming a sister school. And that is one of the articles in the Millis Midway News, the 1st of April, the April edition of the Millis Midway News, about the 11 students who came and stayed with host families here. And eight of those students then went and visited the families in the Netherlands and had a great time. And so we're working as a school district on getting a good percentage of our kids able to do cultural experiences like this, and to try to figure out ways that it can be accessible economically to all students. So the other articles, the Millis Midway News had a lot. Over spring vacation, the Millis Arts Festival was sponsored through the Millis Cultural Council, and that was wonderful at the library with some of our, many of our students participating in the dance, the theater, the music, the art show, writing workshops, and there was a full, full week of activities, which was a wonderful thing funded through the Millis Cultural Council. There was also a good article on Ethan Lazar and winning the Tri-Downy League title for shot put. Another article on the success of our Millis Girls Basketball Team that won our fifth straight Division, Division Four sectional title, and their success, Millis students winning first and third place awards for all of Massachusetts from 28 teams that competed from eight high schools for the video contest about burn awareness. And so we got first and third place winners for our videos, and the video production program continues to rack up numerous honors. And also recently hosted the Lights Camera Action Video Production Conference, which is student-run, very impressive. A good article also in the Millis Midway News on the elementary building project, and there was one this morning in the Metro West Daily News, not the Milford Daily News yet, but I'm hopeful that they'll also post it to the Wicked Mobile and Millis Town Pages. So there's a lot going on and a lot of good, good, fun things happening. It's listed under me, but I might let the, Mr. Chair, well, I can say in terms of budget and warrants, we're still, it's still up in the air. We're waiting for final determinations, revenue numbers, and the Board of Selectmen and the FinCon to finalize that. FinCon will be meeting tomorrow night, Board of Selectmen met last night, and then I believe by next week, they hope to maybe have more clarity around that.
So, last Wednesday night, the Board of Selectmen voted, and then again last night, stood with a budget proposal and set a warrant article funding that, on the positive side, provides a level service budget for all, and actually adds a couple of positions, needed positions, fire department and the school resource officer. There's some concern over it though because, based on my calculations and the Finance Committee hasn't fully vetted it because they haven't seen it presented yet, but it appears that it requires $379,000 of free cash to balance the budget, which is a, is a concern. The other thing that their proposal does is it, to cover the stormwater management costs, which they, they did bring down to roughly 200, 2,000, they have opted to use stabilization funds to do that. The reason, what happened since our last meeting is there was a change in the revenue number that was determined, and it brought the revenue down by about $240,000. So what had originally been proposed as enough funding to do all of this, still would have required a little bit of free cash, but something more in reason with an amount that's been used historically. So instead of reducing anything, they went to stabilization. So in total, their proposal uses $424,000 of stabilization money between the snow and ice current year deficit, which the Finance Committee pushed and recommended that they use, and then this additional 200, so not down 50, it's like 370 now. So the impact of that would be, it would take the 1.5 million that we currently have in stabilization, bring it down to 1.1 million dollars, which actually, based on the budget proposed, would bring our stabilization as a percent of the total budget to 3.7%. And the target is 5%. If stabilization wasn't used for the stormwater management, the, and we just used it for the snow and ice, which is what it's historically been used for, the percentage would stay at 4.6, so much closer than 5. So, as Nancy said, the Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow night, they're also meeting next week. I think what I'm anticipating, I think the Finance Committee is going to get a, they haven't seen any of this as a committee, so I think they're going to see it really for the first time tomorrow night, and probably the week after would be when they have time to get through with some recommendations. So if the potential impact for the, for the school, so the utilization of the free cash at the level it's currently at, if that was removed from the operating budget, the impact that, we would have a $200,000 shortfall. So there's a potential that when the one that gets proposed at town meeting will be somewhere between a level service and a $200,000 shortfall of level service. The other thing the Selectmen did in their meeting last night is they removed all of the warrant articles that they, almost all of the warrant articles that they opted not to recommend funding for. So I was a little surprised by it because at the meeting Denise attended for us last week, they communicated that there would be, that they weren't going to remove any articles until they had, until there was agreement on the fact that there wasn't funding for it, which hasn't been done because the Finance Committee hasn't opined on these. They also indicated that they wouldn't do it without agreement and consensus by us. So they went ahead last night and took every warrant article. The only one they, the only one that they left but opted not to fund was the new computer lease. So they left it in there, they left it on the warrant, and this was because, based on the discussion Nancy and I had, she reached out to the town administrator to question that, because it's a borrowing and because of the new requirements, if it wasn't, if it's not approved at town meeting, we, or if it's not voted at town meeting, we can't do it. This isn't like a, it's not like other articles where if, if it didn't get funded at town meeting and we could find other funds, we could just make the purchase. You can't do that with this. So if this isn't, if there isn't money attached to this by June 5th from some bucket, we won't be able to get through. So they did leave that on. However, they removed the, the funding of the additional school bus stabilization fund. So the, what's on there is establishing, establishing stabilization fund. They removed the article that would allow funding for it. They removed curriculum materials, they removed school backup stores, they removed the high school bathroom, and they removed the auditorium. They recommended funding for the existing bus lease, the existing computer lease, and the Clyde Brown roof repairs.
And medical?
And medical. So in regards to the warrants, I'll open it up. They are, the Selectmen are meeting next Wednesday. They, while they technically finalized the warrant last night, they didn't sign it, which means it's not done-done, it's just mostly done. So I will open it up to the committee to determine whether we would like to formally request these articles be put back on, or at least some subset of them, so that should the Finance Committee come up with a recommendation that doesn't utilize all this free cash for operating budgets, and maybe shift some of it to using it for its intended purpose of one-time money, that there's options. Because right now, what the Selectmen have done is they've removed virtually all the options for the Finance Committee.
So, sorry, I glossed in here on this thing she just said. So is your understanding that they're trying to, they see the need to dip into free cash to support the operating budget, and so without any Finance Committee input, they're just making the decision that because of that, everything else that isn't critical just can't be funded at this point? So they're trying to reduce the warrant articles that have to be run through in town meeting?
Yes. What I believe is that they've used a different process than what has historically been done. Where we used to come up with a number and get a new revenue number that was split 65-35, they didn't go through that exercise. They determined what the total revenue was available, including free cash, and they determined what everyone, well, and then they had everyone's level service budget request, and they had a list of articles that totaled, with everything that was put before them, capital articles that totaled 1.6 million dollars. So what they did is they took the total revenue number of 31.2 million dollars, funded the articles that absolutely had to be funded. They then looked at the level service budget requests, saw that it covered that, and had not much left, and so they stopped there. They then determined, for the reason of having a shorter town meeting and not having a longer list of articles that got removed, that they would remove all the ones that weren't funded.
I guess I understand the thought process. What confuses me a little bit is that they don't have the Finance Committee input yet and we're a month out from town meeting, so why, they had to make those decisions last night? I just, I don't quite understand that part.
Three members of the Finance Committee attended the meeting last night and expressed that exact concern, that that concern was not.
Was that a unanimous vote on the board?
There were two members there last night. But yes.
So, Mr. Chair, knowing what we know at present, can we determine how different this is from what would have been the traditional 65-35 split, which we were told explicitly we would hold to this year? That there would be conversations this summer to talk about a different way of doing it, but that this year we would hold to a 65-35 split?
So if we had done it the historical way, and abided by a more conservative approach using one-time money, we would have, we would have a shortfall of our level service budget of $200,000. And we would be looking to figure out how we were going to mitigate that, which is a conversation we already had, that we have mechanisms to mitigate that, and we would do so. What, what their proposal does is it puts the town as a whole in a position where we are setting ourselves up for next year, that free cash number to either have to be committed to the operating budget just to maintain, or really, I mean, it's the same concern when we had the stimulus money a few years back. It was money that got pumped in that for two years was great, and then we had to be real concerned when it went away. You know, the, the level to which the free cash is in this budget is significant. There have been years where we've got 100, 125,000 in total, and that was usually split 65-35, but to mitigate, to mitigate reductions, or that was, there was relatively small differences between level service and having reductions, so if it cost 100,000 of free cash to save reductions, the town did, you know. Again, just to kind of put some of this in perspective, free cash for the entire year is $800,000. 379 of 800 is almost half. So it would basically commit half, and 800,000 in free cash is a lot. There have been years where it's five or six hundred. So there are concerns. I understand the approach and the desire to mitigate the, the shortfalls. This is, combined with the, with the stabilization fund, is real significant, because the stormwater costs that we're covering aren't going away. There's at least another couple of years of multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars of stormwater costs. And I believe that their concern, or their hope is that there's a way to fund that going forward, but... So the question on the table for us tonight is, do we as a committee want to send a request to the Board of Selectmen to reinstate some of these, some of these articles? You know, when the Finance Committee did review the full list, they were looking favorably on, or at least partly based on size of the dollar, and partly based on, on need, but they had expressed interest in funding the bathroom project, and always the curriculum materials is one way, if there is some, you can put something towards it, is better than nothing. So, again, understanding that the likelihood of all of these being funded is almost zero. We also, to the point, we weren't consulted, and I don't appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So there's a process and philosophical concern. I, I want to focus just initially right here on the immediate concern. So if they don't fund that, according to my draft from 2/28, and I don't think the number changed, the $40,000 bus lease stabilization fund, if we don't, if they're... changed, the $40,000 bus lease stabilization fund, if we don't, if there's no money for there, that takes away our ability to buy out two of the buses at the end of the lease. Does that impact our ability to continue the lease for the six buses that we have now?
No.
So the 40,000 that they, which we need that, those buses are not optional, by taking that and defunding that warrant, we've lost the ability, because we're now in year three of the lease? Four. We're in the last year.
No, we, next year, next year's the last year.
So we're getting close to, because we need money to put money in there, because I don't know exactly what to buy out here, but we were going to fund it for two years and then have to buy it out, wasn't it? Around 80,000?
Right. To anticipate funding too. So, but by, if the stabilization fund is created, which that's still on there and that's there, that would allow it to be funded, so it could be funded in November, and new free cash is established.
So, no, I know, we have to fund, we have to create the fund.
Right.
But then we also have to fund the fund.
Right. So if this becomes a, and this was, was part of discussion when I presented with finance committee, when we talked with them, you know, there has always been concern of, I would be opposed to asking for this to be reinstated as well, but their concern becomes, you know, unfortunately, what's the absolute necessity and need today versus what can be potentially done tomorrow? I mean, they did the same thing, quite frankly, with the fire, there was an article for fire air packs and bottles for the fire department that they need for when they go in. And, you know, this is one of those things where there's a certain number of sets that have to be replaced over a period of time. In three years, they need to replace 15 sets. Or four sets cost $32,000. And the idea, so that was on there. They removed that with the hope that maybe it gets, either there's a grant funded for it, or it comes back up in November. So that was kind of the mindset that they took. And then where the finance committee was expressing concern last night is that by removing them from the warrant, they were further tying the hands of the finance committee to make different recommendations than what the selectmen did.
So they're going to fund, they're going to fund the creation of the bus lease stabilization fund? That's one warrant. So they haven't taken that up. The $40,000 to put money into it has been removed. Our bus lease is on there.
The existing?
The existing bus lease.
And the new bus lease article is on there, but the selectmen have not recommended funding. The finance committee can make a recommendation to fund it by shifting things around.
Our computer lease is on there.
Yep.
Medicaid, which is not on there.
Not the new one?
The old computer lease.
Right. Bus, right. Old computer lease and the new computer lease. They, sorry, we have one bus lease article that covers them all, that's on there, and funded. The old computer lease, so the two leases that we are currently in are on there, and they are recommended to be funded.
And what about the new?
The new lease is on the warrant, not funded.
And that's 28, 22,813 and 11 cents.
So from a priority standpoint, the bus lease stabilization fund would be nice, but we're not at that point right now. But we do need that money.
Yep.
But we need computers. We need to replenish.
Correct.
That, that is a significant.
In my opinion, it's not option.
That is not option. That would be the one that I would, in my personal opinion, I don't like the fact that they didn't consult us and they just took these off. But now that we know this, we can't let the new computer lease go. That's, we need technology. We can't go back.
Right.
And especially if our hands are tied, and because of the new law change in November, we can't.
Well, that was the, because in their first draft a week ago, they hadn't funded it, and they were making comments about removing all the articles that they weren't recommending funding. So I asked the superintendent to reach out to the town administrator to confirm that, you know, based on this new law, if they, if they removed it, they were tying our hands completely by not allowing us to enter the lease. So.
That's one we have to fight.
So that message got received, and they left it on there.
Did they have money, did they put money in it?
No. And now we have to work with the finance committee.
So we still have it?
Right.
We have the embargo, now we're just going to get money, put it to the bucket.
Mr. Chair, and then I guess when it comes to the renovation of the bathrooms and the high school, I mean, that's desperately needed, and it goes back to conversations around maintenance of our buildings and upkeep. And we've certainly received criticisms just from people whose children go to the schools, and then criticism outside of the schools, that the schools, have they been maintained? Can only do so much. And in this instance, it's completely out of our control. We're making an recommendation, it's part of a three-year phased plan. We clearly have a plan, it's very minimal spending. The town is in hard times, but there's only so much we can do.
This is completely out of control. It's frustrating.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I have some questions for the superintendent. If I remember correctly, the curriculum war was for science, for us to be able to round out the science curriculum to be in line with the new standards that were rolled out by the state?
Correct.
So if that's not funded, where does that leave us as far as, are we stalled at that point? With being able to do anything new on the curriculum side for science?
Right. We had a warrant for science curriculum materials, instructional materials last year, and there was no money, so it did not get supported from town funding. We were able to purchase some of the kits so that about, we have about half of the materials we need that got us through the first half of the year. So we really, even though the next generation science standards and the state on which, the state standards on which our students are tested in fifth and eighth grade, we do not yet have about half the materials we need to instruct them in a better way for, you know, first of all, for, to instill a passion for science. These are very hands-on materials. Kids doing science instead of just reading about science, and we're passionate about the fact that kids need to be doing science. So our teachers are doing a good job of trying, but we just have not had the funding to put in place the, a full curriculum aligned to the state standards.
Mr. Chair, these are all, they're very important, and our list was even larger than this. We pared down this list, and I'm hesitant to prioritize which ones we need to agree with. With the soul that these bathrooms are atrocious and we need to start doing something, the auditorium's a mess, we need the servers, we need the curriculum. But I think if we really, if we're getting down to, we're not going to get it all, clearly we're not going to get all of them. We need the computers. We need the computers, and we need to make the argument that not, those two buses are not, those are absolutely mandatory. We need them. We don't have enough buses as it is, so it's not like, we have to fight for that. In my opinion, we have to fight for that computer money. That's not, especially where our hands are tied. I know it's there, but we need to get that money into the warrant.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, this year, electronic testing is happening for MCAS as we speak this week in eighth grade, and it happened last week in, not last week, that was vacation, but prior to vacation in fourth grade, we're doing makeup tests now in fourth grade for those kids who were absent. So this year, it's only two grades of electronic testing, but next year, they will add, I believe, three more grades. So it is an essential tool for our kids, not, not just for the test window period, because it's a very different format, and kids need to use the tool for learning throughout the year, but then also get familiar with the format of the new testing, because it's significantly different and hard to navigate. So there are myriad reasons. It's, you know, part of our 21st century project-based learning, more personalized, so many things that we do rely on our technology for. So I would agree with what Mr. Cavallano just said.
So knowing, I agree for that, you know, frankly, asking to reinstate all five, I don't have a complete problem with five, then being slightly realistic, but knowing.
I'm with you. I agree.
I think, I think adding the, I think if we requested the school bus stabilization, bathroom kind of over the auditorium more because of the smaller number.
Yes.
And then, again, curriculum materials on principle, really. And the fact that we've already got a year and have only been able to do half of it. Again, it doesn't mean any of them are going to get funded, but I think they are strong enough to be ones that are left at least in the discussion for at least another, at least to allow them to be discussed. So if the committee agrees, I'd be happy to draft a request that they are, that those three are added back and request the selectmen that they're meeting next Monday night, or next Wednesday night, that prior to signing the warrant, that they reinstate those three articles.
And, but the stabilization, the bus, the lease stabilization fund and the computer lease? And then the three additional ones? I want to just be clear, we had a long discussion there. The priorities, what are the priorities for us? We want them all, but what are the priorities?
So for me, the new computer lease has to be done.
Okay.
And then the request of what, to put back on the warrant so that they can at least be part of the discussion are curriculum materials, the bathroom, and the school bus stabilization fund.
Okay. I agree.
All right. So I will do that. And then, yeah, then we'll see how, the finance committee has, again, has their meeting tomorrow night, where they'll look at this for the first time, and then probably May 5th will be in a better position to make, to determine what their recommendations would be, and to whatever extent they're going to differ from the ones presented by the selectmen.
Mr. Chair, one question. For what the finance committee will review tomorrow night, are those already to be off of that list that they review?
They are off the warrant as of now. The finance committee has seen them all and knows what they all are.
Okay.
And the amounts. They are, like I said, there were three of them at the selectmen's meeting last night that, while they're not in a position to ask for any of them to be put back, because other than the, other than the ones that we submitted, the selectmen basically have complete control over those, the rest of those articles.
Yeah, all of them.
So there's nothing, the selectmen choose not to put them on, they're not going to be there. We at least have the, we can hope that they take our request and put them on. But the finance committee will basically be left with recommendations, can only recommend ultimately on the warrants that are in front of them. So they will.
Should you let them know that, can you let them know ahead of their meeting tomorrow that we plan on sending correspondence to the board of selection, just so, even though they've seen her?
Yeah.
To reiterate that we had this discussion today?
And, yeah, the finance committee will have to decide what they, I mean, like I said, they expressed concern at the meeting last night regarding the use of stabilization to cover the stormwater management, which automatically, you know, if they don't, if they opt to not recommend using stabilization for that, they have to cover it. Because that's, it has to get paid, so that becomes something they would cover out of free cash. If they cover that out of free cash, then things start having to shift. All right. So I'll do that, and then, so we will know more probably after the 5th. As to what are, what we're actually looking for. All right. So that's budget warrant review. All right. Next, so in the years that we've had contested races, we've offered the opportunity at our meeting of apt candidates tonight and other things for three, however many candidates to present to the audience that we have on camera. So we will do that. I will start, Chair, you start, and then.
The table?
The table. Good.
So part of this process, or throughout this process, I've been asked a lot about why I'm here, and what my story is, or what brought me to this decision. So I thought I'd take you guys through a little bit of my thought process and what brought me here today. I've been interested in giving back a little bit more to the town, and I've been looking into different opportunities and sort of weighing them out. Excuse me. As most of you know, I have a little guy who's about to start kindergarten next year. So next year, I will have one in kindergarten, one in middle school, and one in high school. So I'm just going to take a sec. So with three kids now about to be in the schools, I, and I know you've heard me say this, I have a vested interest in maintaining the quality of education that we're so comfortable and accustomed to having. So with that part of it, and then with the school building project starting, in my background, so of those of you that don't know me, I'm a director of operations for CNY Services. So what I do, what my company does is we are a facilities management company. So although I can't help with the actual, the construction and building, but that's not where my background is, my background is in maintaining buildings. So after construction, how do we protect this investment that we're about to make? Because it's a big one, and people are nervous about that. So how do we protect that? And then, you know, you talked about today, just about this current school and the lack of funding that we have. So how do we take what we have and prioritize that money so we get the best return for that investment? So I feel I can help with that with my professional background. So with those two factors, that's what really I thought, well, and then the election coming up, I thought, well, this is, if this isn't the right opportunity for me to give back, I don't know what is. So that's kind of what brought me here and what started this process. You know, it's, it's hard to be the new person. It's hard to sit here, especially in, in front of, I need to take a breath, my two fellow candidates here that I greatly respect and admire everything that you guys have So where I can't sit here and give a list of my accomplishments, I don't know why I'm so, like, nervous.
Because of what I was agreeing to, that's what I'm saying.
I know. So where I can't sit here and give you a list of accomplishments of what I've done in the school committee, I can sit here and tell you that I'm, I'll work hard to serve the needs of the children regardless of their abilities and backgrounds. I have the ability to work well with others and to, and to work with teams and support group decisions. I have respect for diverse opinions and different points of view, and I'll listen to all ideas. And I guess the last thing I want to say is that, and most importantly, is I'll put in the work and I'll work hard. I'll put in the time to be successful and to help us all be successful, whether that's, you know, conversations with teachers, with administrators, with, with parents, visits to the school, developing relationships with the local and state leaders, and networking with other towns and school committees. I feel like the more I'm successful and you're successful. I feel like the more I'm successful and you're success, and we're successful, the more the schools will be successful. So I'm super excited about this opportunity and I hope I get to serve on this committee.
Thanks, Chair.
You can stay there.
I can.
Wait, why are you going? You're not right?
No, you can stay there.
You want to?
State name.
Name and.
The dress.
Yeah. Rank, yes. Thank you. For, for those of you that don't normally watch, my name's Denise Givens. I have had the pleasure of serving on the school committee since 2014. And I am really looking to try and continue the effort, passion, commitment that hopefully I've displayed over the course of the past three years. I've been fortunate enough to have the opportunity to do a lot of different things. I know what it's like to be the new kid on the block. I just happen to be lucky enough for us to have a really big project at the very beginning of my tenure that I had an opportunity to jump in, dig into, and make what I like to think a fair impact upon. So that was the elementary school building project, which coincided with the beginning of my tenure. I have been from the very beginning and remain actively involved in that. I'm a voting member of the school building committee, which is a subset of groups across town committees that is managing, informing, making decisions, researching, all of the aspects of that project. In addition to my time here in our building, I also serve on the board of the education cooperative, which is surrounding districts and all of town members that have children that go out of district for placement for special education. We are fortunate to have a fabulous community of surrounding districts and a wonderful new facility that was just built over on Walpole a couple of years ago, where we were able to send members of our district through that opportunity to serve there. I've been able to network with other school committee members from other towns across the state. So it's been something that I've enjoyed doing, learned quite a bit. It's nice to sit there with members that have been sitting on school committees for 20 years plus. I bumped into my old camp counselor when I was in elementary school. He's a sitting Norwood school committee member for 30-plus years. So I, I've learned from people that have many more years of wisdom in this area than I, I do. And hopefully, you know, a couple of decades from now, I can be somebody that some younger folks learn from. I do it because I wanna make things better and right for the students, the teachers, the administrators, and the town. I, I don't think there's anything more I can say other than that. Thank you.
Thank you. You have to go to the military.
It's up to you.
All right. Everybody else is doing well. All right, so I'm Sean Doherty. I have four children, my wife Laura and I, a senior, a junior, a freshman, and a fifth grader. Been on the school committee for six years now. Enjoy my service here, the Doherty family. And we've, we've devoted ourselves, immersed ourselves in the community. We've done numbers of, of things as far as volunteerism. We taught our children right from the get-go that they have to serve their community. Whether that be in the, the food bank, the recycling program my wife started, and the Dohertys have all participated in. Coaching, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, we've done it all. I've enjoyed my time here in the town. I've enjoyed serving the kids and that's what it's all about in the end, is the kids. It's not about egos. It's not about anything but the children. We started this project when I was chairman. I've been proud to see it coming to fruition as far as the Clyde Brown goes. I like to see it through to the end. Denise said something about with age comes wisdom. I think, you know, being the older, the older of the candidates, I don't think I'm that old yet, but I've gotten, garnered much wisdom in the past six years. I think I, I know exactly what needs to be done. And I'm not afraid to stand up to, to people when things don't go the way they're supposed to go. And when people may take advantage of certain circumstances, I certainly will fight if it's in the benefit of the children, always. So I'm, I'm hoping to get your vote. I mean, I'd like to continue. I think all three of us wanna serve the children. You all come with a different bag of tools to, to help out. If you like what you've seen, if you like the direction the schools are going, please do vote for me.
Subcommittee reports then. School building committee.
The vote is next Monday. The project will be a, will be information posted on Facebook. There'll be a targeted mailing going out this week, started going out this afternoon. The election is on Monday. This project, in order to go forward, we need 51% of the vote. In order to go to town meeting on June 5th, we need 51% of the vote. The project would have to be, would have to pass at town meeting with a two-thirds majority. This has been a transparent process, an inclusive process, a very detailed and prescriptive process. And in my personal opinion, as a school committee member and as a member of the elementary school building committee, that this is the right project I'm doing, combining the committee report and my closing line mark. I think the project is the right thing for the town. And a lot of mine is, we need to support the students and the administrators and the teachers in the Clyde Brown by giving them a building that is up to, up to date, up to code, and that supports 21st century learning. We're doing wonderful things in our schools and we're doing great things in this building. We're doing great things in the Clyde Brown. Think of how, how much greater we could do in that building if the building was adequate. It's not adequate now, and I can't stand by to see that building not being adequate. We need to fund this project and we need to move forward. And if we don't, the cost of doing nothing is a very expensive venture. It's more expensive than a new school. And so, I'm sorry, this is not a, I, I realize as I'm not giving an update, I'm giving a speech. But I'm taking that moment to make that speech. So that's, so there's a vote coming up, Mark. I don't know if you got that, out of that, all of that. And I'm supportive of the vote.
And in fact, the, on the warrant, the draft warrant that's out right now, getting to town meeting, this will be, the school building will be Article 13 of 31. So it'll be right in the middle. What that means, of course, is people don't have to sit around and wait till the end for it. However, you have to sit around till the end. But yes, it's, it's Article 13 of, actually, sorry, 34.
Let's get to Monday.
People need to go out and vote. Whatever their vote is, they just need to go out and vote.
We've already done correspondence, school committee announcements. I'll start, one, get out and vote, may have heard of two. I wanna thank the three candidates for, one, speaking tonight, two, for running and being willing to serve. It's not always easy. It's not always fun, but, you know, it's stuff that needs to get done. But people need to get out and vote. There's also a contested race for selectmen that people should educate themselves on. So that, the election piece, update, other thing on the article, on the warrant articles, the selectmen also added last night a, an article that would begin the process of amending the town bylaws to move the two town meetings from Mondays to Saturdays. The, there've been discussions on and off about doing that as, as an effort to try and increase attendance. What the, what the current, what the current article doesn't do is establish time, which our bylaw currently doesn't establish time for the Mondays. So it could be any time of the day on Saturday, which I think is a factor people might wanna consider in whether they support this article or not. But that's also on there. And yeah, 34 articles as of now. The school is number 13. If you're not there at the end, then, then anything can be reconsidered. So those are my, those are my, my announcements. Jen, you have anything else?
I do not.
Steve?
There's a, there's a vote on Monday? I don't know if you've been there.
Sean?
Well, my son Daniel had a dodgeball tournament as part of the senior project tonight. He also has one on Thursday for adults today with the kids. I'm proud of him. All the seniors who are getting ready to graduate June 1st, it's bittersweet for me and my wife, but congratulations and goes by too far too fast.
Um, we actually don't have any update on the grievance process, so we don't have to go to the executive session. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cavallano.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.